Good evening everyone and welcome to the public board meeting of the Halton District School Board. Tonight we have both trustees and staff in person and online. We will be using the Creston system for both voting and speaking. Please be cognizant of the speaking order and wait for the chair or vice chair to recognize you in both private and public sessions. I'd like to thank you all for being here tonight. And trustee Garrett, would you like to make a motion to go into private session?
Yes, I will. Thank you.
And trustee Danielle, would you like to second that motion?
Thank you. Yes, I would.
Are there any objections to moving into private session? Seeing none, by unanimous consent, we are in private session.
...
Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to the public meeting of the Halton District School Board. The date is October the 26th, 2022. I would like to welcome our guests both in the gallery and online. Thank you all for coming. We appreciate you being here to show your interest in the discussion occurring at the board. For those in our gallery, we welcome you this evening. My role as chair is to maintain decorum so that the board may engage in discussion, debate, and decision-making regarding our mandated roles in a respectful and efficient manner. All persons attending the meetings must show respect for others in their language and conduct. Notices are posted around the room to remind you of the importance of a safe, secure, and respectful environment for all. Words or actions that make others feel threatened or demeaned will not be tolerated, and decisive action will be taken to ensure the safety and comfort of all. If you so choose to engage in continual inappropriate behavior, you will be asked to leave the meeting. Please know we want you all to be able to be here. We respect and appreciate your attendance in support of concerns that you may have. However, if you so choose to disturb or interrupt the meeting, you will be asked to leave. Visitors and media attending are able to watch the duration of the meeting from the gallery if you do so in line with our code of conduct. If visitors and media have questions, you have the opportunity to submit your questions through the electronic question submission form on the HDSP website. And posters are around the room with a QR code linking you directly to this forum. Please note that trustees are concerned with governance and only questions directed towards issues of governance will be addressed. We ask all visitors and media to remain seated for the duration of the meeting. We remind those visiting, including media, that partisanship in the meeting must be done through the online form. And with that, I will take roll call. Trustee Amos.
Good evening, everyone.
Trustee Collard.
Good evening.
Trustee Daniele.
Thank you, I'm here.
Vice Chairl Harrison.
I'm here, thank you.
Trustee Garretts.
Good evening, everyone.
Trustee Gray.
Hello, everyone.
Trustee Grabens.
I'm here.
Trustee Oliver.
Good evening, everyone.
Trustee Reynolds.
Hello, I'm here in virtual land.
Trustee Rocha.
Good evening.
Trustee Roggerio.
A present.
And Trustee Wang.
I'm here.
Thank you. Associate Director Salmini, can you please note the staff which are in attendance tonight, please?
Certainly, good evening. We have a full complement of staff online and in the boardroom.
Wonderful, thank you so much. Trustee Garretts will be honoring the land this evening.
Thank you. Halton as we know it today is rich in history and modern traditions of many First Nations and the Métis. From the Anishinaabe to the Atawandaran to the Haudenosaunee and the Métis, these lands surrounding the Great Lakes are steeped in indigenous history. As we gather today on these treaty lands, we have the responsibility to honor and respect the four directions: land, waters, plants, animals, ancestors that walked before us, and all the wonderful elements of creation that exist. We would like to acknowledge and thank the Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation for sharing their traditional territory with us.
Thank you, Trustee Garretts. I would also like to take some time to recognize that today, which is October the 26th, is the day that recognizes the birth of Baha'ula. Baha'i is in Ontario, comes from the diverse backgrounds, and are dedicated to the promotion of a global society that reconciles the spiritual and material aspects of life. Baha'i is believed, oh sorry, Baha'i is believed that the progress of society depends upon balanced relationships between the individual, the community, and institutions, each of which has its own responsibilities and roles to further social progress. Social change involves both individual transformation and the creation of just social, economic, and political institutions. On sunset tonight, millions of Baha'i worldwide celebrate the twin holy birthdays. Adherents of this faith rejoice in the birth anniversaries of the two figures most central to their faith: Baha'ula and the Bab. Thank you. Now we are up to the agenda. Trustee Amos, would you like to make a motion to approve the agenda?
Yes, I would, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And Trustee Collard, would you like to second that motion?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Or debate? Are there any objections to moving or approving the agenda? Seeing none, the agenda is now approved by unanimous consent. Now checking in, are there any possible conflicts of interest this evening? Again, seeing none, we are up to items 2.0, delegations and presentations to the board. And this evening, we will start this with the student trustee report. Trustee Roggero and Wang, do you have a report for us this evening?
We do.
Great, if you can go ahead, please, thank you.
All right, good evening, everyone. I hope you've all had a great day. Today, Trustee Roggero and I are super excited to be sharing with you all our student trustee report tonight that will touch on our first student senate meeting that happened last week, our mental health motion that was brought to student senate during this meeting, the Osta Aiko Fall General Meeting, and our plans for the near future. I'll pass it to Trustee Roggero to talk about our first senate meeting last week.
As Trustee Wang mentioned, we had the absolute pleasure of hosting the first HDSP Student Senate meeting for the 2022-2023 school year. We were joined by Trustee Oliver, Trustee Reynolds, Ms. Patel, Ms. Jarvis, and Ms. Nicolique alongside over 110 students from elementary and secondary schools across Halton. During the meeting, we went over introductions, gave an overview of senate, and explained the role of a student senator. And we also held subcommittee breakout rooms around the pillars of the HDSP multi-year strategic plan and alongside opening subcommittee applications for our senators. To any of the senators who are watching, applications for executive positions close this Friday, and we're super excited to get a head start on the amazing ideas we have for student senate, and it couldn't be possible without our co-chairs and executive team. Student senators are excited to engage with their students about their new role of being a conduit for student voice in the HDSP. We look forward to seeing all the senators build connections with their constituents. Students, be on the lookout for your senators in your school. Trustee Wang and I have encouraged all student senators to launch introductions, whether that's through a slideshow, a video, class visits, and much more. They are so excited to connect with you. Reach out to your student senator to begin a conversation and to share your voice. We also had the gracious opportunity to welcome both Director Ennis and Associate role at the HDSB's first Senate meeting. Student senators from across the board are so thrilled to continue the conversation during their school visits and look forward to all they will accomplish during this upcoming year. Before the meeting concluded, Trustee Wang and I launched a review into the Student Senate norms for the upcoming year. The establishment of these norms are essential to make sure that students feel comfortable to share their voice without fear of repercussions, and we look forward to finalizing these norms at our Senate meeting next week. I'll pass it over to Trustee Wang.
All right. So additionally, during our first Student Senate meeting, Trustee Rogero and I presented and passed the Mental Health and Well-being Leadership Committee motion. The purpose of this motion was to approve for the launch of a committee made up of students to inform the board's mental health strategy at the board level. Note that this is separate from Student Senate. The main purpose of such a committee is to address the void of student perspectives within the HDSB's mental health strategy through fostering dialogue regarding mental health issues that commonly affect HDSB students. As we told our senators, this motion originated from dialogue between students, last year's Student Senate Mental Health Subcommittee, and mental health staff to provide a platform for students to guide mental health strategy and ensure that students are actively engaged in planning mental health promotion activities. This is a separate entity from school youth well-being teams and the Student Senate Mental Health and Well-being Subcommittee, who facilitate wellness initiatives and projects, whereas, on the other hand, the purpose of this committee is to focus in on the board's strategy and action plans regarding mental health. The Subcommittee addresses goals under the HDSB's multi-year strategic plan, the HDSB's mental health and well-being strategy plan, and the way forward. Following our presentation, the motion was seconded by Student Senator and cited a very deep and thorough conversations with our Student Senators, and passed with 103, 4, and 4 against. We can't wait to meet with with mental health staff in the future to discuss how to move forward with this motion, and also engage students both within and outside of Senate in this process. I will pass it back to Trustee Rogero.
In correlation to the Student Senate Mental Health Motion, Trustee Wang and I had the opportunity to join members of the HDSB Mental Health Team, teachers and community stakeholders during the Mental Health and Strategy Advisory Committee meeting. This was an excellent discussion surrounding a wide range of topics incorporating, such as incorporating friendly language in student awareness for the HDSB Circle of Support System, highlighting mental health initiatives in our schools, such as the calming space at Rattlestake Point Public School, and a review of mental health questions from the Have Your Say survey. This committee is off to an amazing start, and I look forward to the many productive discussions we'll have in the future. We hope to choose student representatives from this committee from Student Senate by the end of November. I'll pass it over to Trustee Wang.
All right. So moving on from Student Senate, we are going to be sharing with you all everything we learned from the Osta Ako Fall General Meeting that happened this past weekend. So as I mentioned at the last board meeting, Trustee Rogero and I, from October 20th to the 23rd, went to Toronto at the Marriott to become professionally developed, and we attended the annual Osta Ako Fall General Meeting. Over the course of these four days, we networked with other student trustees across Ontario, learned more about this year's working groups and how to get involved, and also learned more about what the Public Board Council aims to do. So Trustee Rogero and I had the honor of being this year's co-chairs for two Osta working groups, Trustee Rogero for Equity and Inclusion, and myself for the Ontario Student Voice Awards, and we were able to carry out a presentation on our respective working groups to recruit members and hold our first meeting of the year during this conference. We look forward to bringing you all future updates about what we are — about what our working groups are up to, and how Trustee Rogero and I are continuing to be involved on the provincial level through Osta Ako. During this conference, we also got to work more closely with other public board student trustees, and got to learn of the goals that the Public Board Council has set for this year. These include redefining student success, connecting Osta to more public student trustees, strengthening connections with other organizations such as OPSA, and continuing to push for student governance and school boards that still haven't sent a letter to the ministry. We look forward to bringing you updates in the future on publications from Osta regarding public education, and we had a great time at this conference and can't wait for the Osta Ako Board Council Conference in February.
Alongside all the fantastic work Trustee Wang has mentioned, we also had the opportunity to hear from some fantastic keynote speakers, such as OSFA President Kathy Abraham, who spoke about the importance of student voice, Education Minister Leche, who spoke about the process of updating the curriculum to include content that is reflective of our diverse student population in Ontario, or OFIA, about understanding the and improving the Ontario sex ed curriculum, along with school mental health, who articulated the importance of student advocacy and mental health discussions. All these speakers shared insight into some of the most pressing issues that are impacting students in Ontario.
All right. So on to some of our plans in the near future. So next week, on November 2, Trustee Rogero and I will be meeting with the HDSB Student Equity Committee for our second meeting of this school year. We can't wait to welcome onboard our new teacher representatives and staff facilitators and see our committee members once again. Our primary goals for this meeting is to follow up on our action items, which include developing ways to promote this committee, developing an application process, deciding what membership will look like, and creating communications pieces for this committee. Our goal is to have this committee launch and promote applications by this February and have it be as successful and as wide-reaching as possible. We look forward to this meeting and can't wait to see what the future holds for this committee, and as always, board, staff, and trustees are welcome to sit in and see what we're doing.
Next week, we have another great opportunity for students as the next Student Senate meeting for November takes place. During this meeting, we hope to finalize and pass our Student Senate norms, establish our goals and vision for the upcoming year, and finalize our applications for our executive team. Also, we are looking to scout out students for the Environmental EMT and the Mental Health Strategy Advisory Committee so we can ensure that student voice is heard. In addition, Trustee Wang and I look forward to proposing the HDSB Student Senate Terms of Reference, along with reviewing the administrative feedback form for the new Student Senate to review for the upcoming year. We also have the wonderful opportunity of welcoming our HDSB Human Rights and Equity Advisor to join students next week to engage in a process of equity and learning in the HDSB.
And on to our last, certainly not least, action item that Trustee Rogero and I have set for the near future. Tomorrow, Trustee Rogero and I will be meeting with Communications Officer Jason Meisner to discuss plans for filming an updated student trustee and Student Senate video, provided the amount of changes that happened to Senate in recent years. We will also be supporting the board's plan to promote student trustee elections this year, which will be coming in February. We hope to strengthen the communication to students in Grade 7 to 12 regarding the importance of voting for your student trustees, and we'd love to see an increase in student engagement with this year's election.
In closing, we look forward to continuing our work with staff, students, and parents as the Student Senate begins this year. From the Student Senate Equity Committee to the Mental Health and Leadership Task Force alongside Senate, there's a lot on the horizons for students in the HDSB. Trustee Wang and I are welcome to take any questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for our student trustees? Seeing none, I have one. So when you were being professionally developed over October 20th to the 23rd, I'm wondering if both of you had one key takeaway. Well, like, what was the biggest piece that you found from that weekend for yourselves?
Trustee Wang, do you want to start, or?
Sure, I can start. So I think a huge part of these conferences is meeting with student trustees from other areas in Ontario and across the province. And when you hear about what a lot of these trustees are advocating for and what they have to go through, you just start to realize the disparities between different school boards. For example, boards up in the north and more rural areas experience so much more different, just different issues and different experiences than Trustee Rogero and I face. It was super interesting to hear about what they're advocating for in their school boards and what they're trying to focus in on, and what the most prominent issues that they hear are. They're very different from what Trustee Rogero and I experience, and it's also kind of sparked us to think more about the diverse experiences that may happen in the HDSB as well. So that was really just like mind-opening and really interesting to hear. I'll pass it to Trustee Rogero to talk about anything you would like to share.
Yeah, I totally agree. Kind of networking with those student trustees is really interesting. It really opens up personally for me my perspective into issues, not only at the HDSB but across the province. Like Trustee Wang mentioned, some of our northern students, and they face a lot more pressing issues and different issues, and face a lot of challenges that are kind of basic needs for HDSB students. So it really made me reflect on how grateful I am as a student trustee and a student of the HDSB to have access to so many resources, to have access to so much staff and support, as many boards across the province really, you know, don't have access to the same resources as I have and as students have in the HDSB. So that really opened my eyes, and I'm just super grateful overall to be a member of the HDSB and have access to so many resources. But it's really opening up that perspective was really powerful to me to kind of understand what students across Ontario are experiencing, understanding the overlaps within the HDSB and areas where we could improve, and areas that, you know, Trustee Wang and I can look to launch in Student Senate and in the board. So it was great.
Great, thank you so much. Anyone else have any questions for our student trustees? It's always great to hear of those learning experiences, so I really appreciate that. Thank you. All right, seeing none, I want to thank you both again for such a great presentation. You always open my eyes to all of the things that you do, and I really do appreciate getting that insight. So thank you very much, and we look forward to your next report at our next meeting and your Senate meeting next week. Okay, we have no delegations or presentations this evening, so that brings us up to the consent agenda items for both approval and information. So for approval, we have two: the minutes from October 12, and the Committee of the Whole meeting minutes from September 14. And then we also have for information, the Order Paper Administrative Update Report, which is number 22127, Policy and Governance Procedures Review Schedule, and then we have a group of end-of-term reports from standing committees, which include the Governance Committee Report, the Trustee Professional Development Report, the Board Self-Assessment Report, and then finally, we have three end-of-term reports from our ad hoc committees, which include Trustee Promotion and Onboarding Report, Student Trustee Mentor Report, Reimagine Forward Report, and then finally, we have the Inspire Awards Annual Report. So I'm going to put the motion on the floor and then see if there is any items that anybody would like to have pulled. So be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve the consent agenda items and receive the information items for October 26, 2022. Trustee Danielle, would you like to make a motion to deal with the consent agenda?
Thank you, yes, I would.
And Trustee Grabens, would you like to second that motion?
I'd love to, thank you.
Wonderful. Are there any items that need to be pulled for discussion this evening? Seeing none, are there any objections to approving the consent agenda? Seeing none, then the consent agenda is approved by unanimous consent. Thank you very much. We are now up to item 5.0, ratification items, and we'll start with ratification of business transacted in private session. Vice Chairl Harrison, do we have any business from private session that requires approval?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. We have two.
Go ahead, please.
Okay, first one. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve matters from private session October 26, 2022, respecting negotiations, and that is report 22135, and I so move.
And Trustee Oliver, would you like to second that motion?
I will second that.
Thank you. Is there any debate? Seeing none, if you can please cast your votes on that first item, please.
Gray approves.
Oh, she's the wrong one. There we go. That's my —
No, yep, that's the one.
That topic. Sorry, if you could cast your votes one more time, please. Sorry about that. Trustee Amos. Wonderful, and that passes by unanimous consent.
Okay, our second topic is as follows. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees accept the private session 2021-2022 Audit Committee Annual Report to the Board of Trustees. That's report 22128, and I so move.
And Trustee Collard, would you like to second that?
Yes, please.
Is there any debate or discussion? Seeing none, if you can please cast your votes.
Gray approves.
And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, we are now up to action items for October 26, and we will start with item 5.2.1, the Special Education Advisory Committee New Representative, Report Number 22117. Superintendent Ruddock, do you have anything to speak to this?
Good evening, through the chair of trustees. I don't, the report is before you, and this is to have Wendy Paveo from Community Living Burlington join our CAC. I'm happy to take any questions.
All right, I'll put the motion on the floor, and then if there's any questions you can ask. So be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve the recommended appointment of Wendy Paveo as the Halton District School Board CAC representative for Community Living Burlington. Trustee Garrett, would you like to make a motion for that, or make that motion, please?
Yes, I would, thank you.
And Vice Chairl Harrison, would you like to second that?
Sure, thank you.
Is there any debate? Seeing none, if you can all cast your votes, please.
Affirmative, Gray.
Trustee Wang? Awesome, great. Thank you very much, and that passes unanimously. Next, we are up to 5.2.2, School Naming and Renaming Governance Procedure and Policy, Report Number 22132. Trustee Rocha and Trustee Collard, on behalf of the School Naming and Renaming Group, which includes Trustee Amos's chair, Trustee Danielle, Trustee Gray, Trustee Oliver, and Trustee Rocha. I will read the motion and then ask for any feedback. So be it resolved that the scope of work for the School Naming and Renaming Policy Working Group has been completed and no further changes are recommended to the School Naming and Renaming Policy and Governance Procedure at this time. Trustee Amos, would you like to move that motion?
Yes, I would be happy to, thank you.
Thank you very much. And Trustee Danielle, would you like to second that?
Thank you, yes, I would.
Thank you. Is there any information that the group would like to share, and is there debate or questions? I'll put it off to Trustee Rocha.
Sure, thank you. Through you, Chair. To the board, this is a summary of the conversation that we had at Committee of the Whole, in that this closes off the work for the working group, and that there are — that despite having PD, debate was had, and consensus was reached that there would be no further changes to the policy as it stood. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any debate or questions regarding this motion? Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you, through the chair. So in the last few years, many boards across Ontario and Canada have had to grapple with renaming schools, individuals who have bailed out of public favor, and as such, a number have changed their naming policy, and they stopped naming schools after people. Well, I'm disappointed that our board has decided the Halton District School Board will continue to allow this — fiduciary obligations to taxpayers. As long as we continue to commit to naming new schools after people, we continue to accept the risk that one day our board will need to rename a school and that comes with a long laundry list of costs, signage, uniforms, et cetera. And this does not at all reflect the reputational cost to our board or even to the family who bears the name that the school was named after. So I would, I would just end with, you know, we need to continue to consider the collective cost of renaming a school and what the public tax money could have used that money better used for. So I'll just leave my comment, I know we, this report is before us and I thank you for this.
Thank you. So trustee Grabens, you're next, and then trustee Wang.
Thank you, through the chair. I just want to remind all our colleagues and actually the public that the conversation around this was fully public during our last Committee of the Whole meeting and people are more than welcome to see the entire discussion from last week's meeting and I actually encourage people to go and do that. So thank you very much, I will be supporting this.
Thank you, trustee Wang.
Okay, so trustee Reynolds mentioned earlier that students, that there's a flaw in the process of how names are chosen and one of that is that there's a lack of student voice in it. And I, and I believe trustee Rogero thoroughly agree with this stance. We both have conveyed that we believe that names are static and the ways name, the way names are viewed can change over time and the positivity of names is rooted in the perception it receives. And since students are the ones who wear these names, they are the, probably the most relevant stakeholder at play. And so the kind of acceptability of whether or not we should name schools after people is rooted in the naming process and it is really only acceptable in my point of view if students are meaningfully included in the process, but that is not the case that we see today. Throughout this very discussion of school naming and renaming, we've seen no formal process or organized effort for student voice and this needs to be thought out more. Even the voices of trustee Rogero and I were not meaningfully seeked, I feel, and we had to, you know, ask to share what we thought. And student, and I know that in the past when it came to naming, Student Senators have, and students have been delegated to the board, but the thing is that this process isn't mandatory and it is independent, it is independent of the process of naming schools. And so what this means is that it's kind of regarded as optional, seeking student input in this process right now is regarded as optional, it's not regarded as mandatory. And I thoroughly believe that in order, if we do want to name schools after people, we need to consider student voices throughout that entire process and if that option is going to be there and it needs to be kind of written down in the process and mandated. Students are the ones who will be attending these schools, they will be wearing these names and they are the ones who will be, you know, most likely celebrating these chosen names. It's necessary that they are not going to be put in a position where they have to wear the name of a person that does not stand for who they are or what they believe in. The names, and although student input is kind of, you know, we see student input when it comes to nominating the names itself, the issue with that is that, is that it is subject to the opinions and views of those reviewing these names. And so if we do want to have the option of naming schools after people, student voice should be meaningfully seeked so that in the future, we don't risk the names that we choose being kind of putting students in a position where they don't feel comfortable and they don't feel supported attending the schools and wearing the name of the school that they attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Rogero.
Thank you, I really echo trustee Wang's sentiments here. The, really, the lack of student voice embedded in the procedure is why I can't support this, this motion. Really, it comes down to how do we ensure that the names of our schools are reflective of the diverse population of students in Halton and how do we ensure that these, these schools and these people who our students will be wearing, who will be idolizing, who will be looking up to reflect the modern Halton student? And I think the lack of student choice and voice embedded in the process makes it very challenging to meet that need, to ensure that our schools are representative of our students and the students of Halton. And so that's where I stand on it and I believe that student voices should be at the center of this, this motion and must be considered when we name schools and if we name schools after people. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Trustee Collard.
Yes, thank you very much for what you've both said, trustees Wang and Rogero. I do want to remind all trustees that there is an administrative procedure that accompanies the governance procedure. The governance procedure deals only with the governance portion of naming schools, whereas the administrative procedure deals with the process for arriving at the list of names and that falls within the director's purview. So if your reason for voting against this governance procedure is because it doesn't include students, you're voting against the wrong procedure. It would be the director's administrative procedure that, that would include students in the process because it is the director's process that comes up with the shortlist of names. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear and that people didn't vote against this procedure for the wrong reason because this procedure has nothing to do with who is involved in the, the putting forward of names and in the committee for putting forward names. This is specifically with respect to the governance role of trustees in determining what the final name would be, not any, anything to do at all with how the, how the list gets narrowed or put together. I just want to be very clear on that point because I wholeheartedly believe that student voice should be part of this and I have suggested in the last couple of iterations that students should be added to the director's administrative procedure, but that is beyond our purview because administrative procedures are not governance in nature and that is only within the director's purview. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Trustee Oliver.
Yeah, thank you, through you Chair. So the subcommittee could not reach consensus on whether to continue to name schools after people. And perhaps it is because of this admin procedure and maybe it's worth exploring suspending putting a person's name forward until the AP procedure is revised. I mean, there are a number of boards across Ontario that have stopped the practice of naming schools after people going forward and so I, you know, maybe if we have a more robust AP in place, that would help to alleviate some of the, the fears that we have. At the Committee of the Whole, I outlined all of my reasons for which I do not support putting a person's name on a school and it's because of these reasons that I lack confidence in proceeding with that. We know there are various lobby groups and they have their own agendas and they can attain those agendas simply by putting forward a person's name. So, you know, we know there are a lot of great individuals, but we only know one aspect of them and not everything and that speaks to, you know, our ability to mitigate risk. So not being confident in the processes of vetting names, collecting and shortlisting, prioritizing how the names are selected, or even the trustee's ability to reject all of the proposed names, I do not have the confidence to proceed with this and so I will not be able to support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Danielli.
Thank you very much. I will be supporting this motion. I was very fortunate enough to be on the subcommittee that looked at naming and renaming and I believe we had probably five or six extremely long and comprehensive meetings over the summer, as well as a very long and comprehensive discussion at Committee of the Whole. The unfortunate reality is that there is not a unanimous decision on this. So to say that we didn't reach consensus is not actually the same as we didn't reach a unanimous decision and at every one of those meetings, there was enough will to move forward. I think what's being lost in the discussion here, there seems to be a perception that we will definitely be naming schools after people. All this does is leave the door open so that if another Terry Fox comes along or Viola Desmond or someone absolutely amazing who could inspire students, the option is there. In nowhere does it say we will absolutely name schools after people, but it does give us that option and I will be supporting this because I don't believe in restricting choice and opportunity in any way, shape or form. And I do believe that that's what this particular document does do and as I said throughout all of the meetings of the Subcommittee of the Naming and as well as Committee of the Whole, it did receive the majority support, so I would not support putting this off yet again. It's been a long five, six months getting us to where we are and I'd really like to see this Board of Trustees, which started it, this Board of Trustees finishes and wraps it up, so I would be supportive of both the motion and of going forward with the vote tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Trustee Gray.
Thank you very much. I, through the chair, I want to acknowledge the comments made by all of my colleagues tonight and the student trustees. I, I continue to see really a diverse opinion on this one facet of the, the policy going forward and so I would also not be able to support it. I'm, and possibly because of some of the things that trustee Oliver has said, that there's, there's an inability to be very clear about the admin procedure and some of the aspects of that. For example, I'm unsure as to the depth at which our board would be able to investigate a person's name in order to ensure that it's appropriate to be put on a school. I'm unclear about how we would measure what a community wants when it comes to naming schools. There's several different aspects of this that, that trouble me and I too, like trustee Danielli, I was on that committee, I sat through it all, I, I, you know, was a willing participant, listened really well, listened hard, but at this particular point, until some of the other questions are answered, I really couldn't support that. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Trustee Amos.
Thank you very much. There were quite a number of us on the committee and I want to remind the committee members that we did look at the, the AP for the director and we did make a number of recommendations and one of those recommendations was to include more student voice. And I mean, we can only make suggestions and I know that the director told, he came and actually spoke to our committee and he said he heard us and that he would look at our recommendations and that he would look at ways of trying to do exactly that. So I just wanted to remind people that that actually happened and this is a discussion that we had at our committee and yes, we were not able to come to a consensus, but we had that discussion again at the last Committee of the Whole meeting and I believe everybody listened to each other, was respectful and heard each other and for multiple reasons, there was a majority who decided to go forward because they didn't want to exclude the possibility of having someone who may be a phenomenal individual and have the school named after them. It doesn't mean all that we're going to be naming schools after all individuals, but it would give us that option at least to have that option. Just my thoughts.
Thank you very much. Vice Carol Harrison.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. It seems to me that whether we approve or not approve this motion, the effect is the same. If we don't approve it, the policy as it stands stays in place, which contains the naming policy status quo. If we do approve this motion, the status quo remains. So for me, this is a recognition of all of the work that has been done by the working group and the governance subcommittee and this really turns, I think, on the last three words, which is at this time and it in no way precludes the next board from taking a look at this again. So it's really that number one that is outstanding within the scope of the governance piece. And so given the fact that the next board, should they choose to reconstitute an ad hoc or a working group on this matter, can look at some of these other avenues and our time is kind of, we've got two, two more weeks, so I don't see that we can, given that I feel like nobody's changed their mind over the last number of months and weeks, I don't see us coming to a landing on this and fresh eyes and minds might be good. So therefore, I will support this and just in respect to what trustee Amos said about, you know, that conversation with the director and respecting what our student trustees mentioned, hopefully there will also be some additional dialogue and, and maybe revisions related to that, as well as the other recommendations that came forward. So, so thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Rogero.
Yes, thank you. The, the makeup of the committee that the director puts together is the director's purview. Trustees cannot tell the director who to include on the committee or how to conduct the committee. We've gotten legal opinion on that and we are not allowed to intervene in that area in any way and we, we never do. The administrative procedures belong to the director and we do not tell the director how to conduct business, we tell the director what business to conduct. That is just the way the ADACT is written and, and I understand where you're coming from, trustee Rogero, and I hope that the director puts inclusion of student voice in the admin procedure. Thanks.
Thank you. And I just want to draw people's attention to the four areas of scope that were included in this motion or in this working group. So they were looking at the criteria for school names, streamlining the governance procedure to make it less awkward, voting, and focus on looking forward. So I'm, I'm just wanting to draw our attention back to those four pieces as the focus of... will impact student, and how names and people impact the diverse experiences and cultures and students who come to our schools every single day, how these people, whose schools will be named after, can impact their educational journey. And it's always important that we ensure that these names and these people are reflective of the modern student identity. So, thank you.
Thank you. Second time Speaker, Trustee Collard.
Yes, thank you. The makeup of the committee that the director puts together is the director's purview. Trustees cannot tell the director who to include on the committee, or how to conduct the committee. We've gotten legal opinion on that, and we are not allowed to intervene in that area in any way, and we never do. The administrative procedures belong to the director, and we do not tell the director how to conduct business. We tell the director what business to conduct. That is just the way the ADACT is written, and I understand where you're coming from, Trustee Rogero. And I hope that the director puts inclusion of student voice in the admin procedure. Thanks.
Thank you. And I just want to draw people's attention to the four areas of scope that were included in this motion, or in this working group. So they were looking at the criteria for school names, streamlining the governance procedure to make it less awkward, voting, and focus on looking forward. So I'm just wanting to draw our attention back to those four pieces as the focus of what this group was looking at. So are there any other questions or comments before we move to vote? Seeing none. Please cast your votes.
Against, Gray.
Thank you. So that passes, but not unanimously. We have Leah, oh, sorry, Trustee Reynolds. So against, we have Trustee Reynolds, Trustee Gray, Trustee Oliver, and Trustee Wang and Trustee Rogero. But the majority voted for, so that passes. Thank you very much. We are now up to item 5.2.3, Notification Protocol, Report Number 22131. Vice Cheryl Harrison, would you like to speak to it before I put the motion on the floor?
Sure, I can do that. Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. This report contains motions that are a request for the next board for consideration. And that request is to develop a notification protocol that would be in place for trustees, notifying other elected officials for all Halton municipalities, the regional government, MPPs, and members of parliament, given that we all serve the interests of the same community, and a clear and consistent approach to notifying our counterparts of events, opportunities, discussions, such as those held in council chambers or these chambers, where there's matters of mutual interest, that we would be notifying our colleagues of such, so that they can be involved if they so choose. Because ensuring that the relevant parties are present for these events and discussions may be assistive in clearly differentiating roles and responsibilities among the different public offices and agencies, and also together providing cross-jurisdictional information in a timely manner. So it's just about how we can work together more efficiently, more cohesively and collaboratively with our colleagues in different levels of government. It would also help us to achieve or further our trustee code of conduct, in that we could hopefully be speaking to inspiring public confidence in the abilities and the integrity of the board. So that is kind of the genesis of this, and I know that we, as a board, have, over the last four years, and eight years that I've been involved, there's been times when discussions have taken place at different council meetings that were related to education, that it would have been great to be involved in. Conversely, I know that some of our municipal and regional colleagues have felt similar about things that were discussed at our meetings or events that were hosted by the school board. So the idea is that we would hopefully lead the way and advise people when this is developed, and hope for some reciprocity in that regard. So it is a request for the next board, given that our time again is short. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll read the motion and then open the floor for questions. So be it resolved that in order to foster collaboration among elected officials serving the Halton community, that the Board of Trustees consider creating an ad hoc committee to develop a notification protocol that can be applied consistently for events and opportunities of shared interest, with a report back to the board by April of 2023. Be it further resolved that through the chair, a copy of this motion be forwarded for information, comment, and consideration to the Chair of the Halton Catholic District School Board, the Mayors of all Halton municipalities, and the Regional Chair, members of provincial parliament, and members of parliament for Halton writings. Be it further resolved that through the chair, a copy of the completed notification protocol be forwarded to the Chair of the Halton Catholic District School Board, the Mayors of all Halton municipalities, and the Regional Chair, members of provincial parliament, and members of parliament for the Halton writings. Vice Cheryl Harrison, would you like to move this motion?
Yes, it would be my honor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Trustee Reynolds, would you like to second that motion?
Yes, I would. I'm sorry, my system is so slow tonight.
That's okay. Thank you so much.
If you see me leave, it's because it's bouncing. My system is not performing well.
Okay. Thank you so much. Trustee Gravence, you have a question?
Yes, through the chair. And I was just noted that the French boards aren't included in this, and I was just wondering if there would be, should we include it? Or is it just because they are covering multiple regions, especially the French Catholic Board, that it would, it may not be worth it to them to receive all these notifications if other boards do this too?
Vice Chair?
Thank you for that suggestion. I am certainly, the reason that you outlined at the end, just given the geography and so on, was the initial reason why they weren't in there, but I'm happy to add, if you or others see that. I see people nodding to say, add, and I certainly take that as an amendment to add those two, a friendly amendment to add the two boards in as well. Thank you.
And just for further discussion or consideration with this, when we have had started our meeting, so we did have, as Vice Chair and Chair, we had a first meeting that was sort of the starting point for this, that was created with Rob Burton and the French board chairs were there as well. Trustee Rocha.
Thank you. Through you, Chair. So I'm definitely in favor of adding the French boards to the letter, to the motions. Now, seeing as how this is a motion that centered on communicating with so many different parties, and obviously, communication is key. It's important, and we do need to establish a protocol. What do you envision as having, how much involvement do you see from our own communications team as part of this committee? And I'm only thinking, as a trustee, I wouldn't be aware of all of the different protocols in place for the different boards, the different levels of government, and definitely the amount of people involved. So what do you envision our communications team's role in this?
Thank you. My understanding is that a number of these committees that are struck can also have a staff person appointed to them, should the director so choose. And I would, I would agree that a communications person would be a valuable addition to this. I don't presume to know what the outcome will be, and I also don't intend it to be any, a big workload for a staff person. But rather that it would be, yeah, setting those ground rules with input and collaboration from staff, hopefully, and then trustees going forward with whatever the outcome is.
Thank you. Are there any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, I'm putting the motion on the floor with the amendment, including the French schools as well, please. So if you can please cast your votes. Thank you. Sorry, once again, please, there seems to be a glitch in the system. Leah, it's out here, too.
Gray approved.
Trustee Amos, I'm sorry, your vote hasn't been recorded. Perfect, thank you very much. And that
My apologies, my system's delaying too.
No, it's okay. I think all the systems are having glitches today. Thank you very much. That passes or carries unanimously. Okay, that brings up to item 5.2.4, the delegation policy and governance procedure, the revised report number 22107, Trustee Rocha and Trustee Collard on behalf of the Governance Standing Committee. Would you like to speak to it before I read the motion? Trustee Collard?
Sure, yes. This is coming forward this evening, after having gone to Committee of the Whole two weeks ago. We had a good conversation about the changes, which are relatively small. And if you have any questions, please let us know, and we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. So I will read the motion. Be it resolved that the delegation policy appended to report 22107 be approved, and that any previous versions be revoked. Be it resolved that the delegation governance procedure appended to report number 22107 be approved, and that any previous versions be revoked. Trustee Gray, would you like to move this motion?
Yes, I would.
Thank you very much. And Trustee Oliver, would you like to second that?
I'll second.
Thank you very much. Is there any debate? Seeing none, if you can please cast your votes.
Approved, Gray.
Thank you, and that carries unanimously. All right, thank you. We are now up to item 5.2.5, the Annual Audit Committee Report, Report Number 22119. Trustee Collard on behalf of the Audit Committee. Trustee Collard, would you like to speak to it, or shall I read the motion first?
You can read the motion first.
All right, thank you very much. So be it resolved that the Board of Trustees accept the 2021-2022 Audit Committee Annual Report to the Board of Trustees, and the 2021-2022 Audit Committee Annual Report to the Ministry. Trustee Collard, would you like to move that?
Yes, thank you.
And Trustee Rocha, would you like to second that?
I would, thanks.
Are there any questions or debate? Seeing none, if you can please cast your votes. Thank you so much.
Approved, Gray.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, and that passes unanimously. Okay, we are now up to item 7.0, Communication to the Board. First of all, we have Items for Action on November the 2nd, and Item 6.1.1, the Audit Committee
Point of order, you've missed two items from the agenda.
I'm sorry, Trustee Collard, I did. I've missed, sorry, Item 5.2.6, Committees and Appointments Governance Procedure, Report Number 22134, Trustee Rocha and Collard on behalf of the Governance Standing Committee. Would either of you like to speak to this before I read the motion?
I'll speak briefly, through you, Chair. This has come, it's been shared with the board a few times now. It has gone to legal. This is the final version, so it is what it is. It's on the report. We've discussed it. Thanks.
Thank you so much. So I'll read the motion. Be it resolved that the Committees and Appointments Governance Procedure appended to Report Number 22134 be adopted. Trustee Rocha, would you like to move that motion?
Yes.
And Trustee Collard, would you like to second that motion?
Yes, thank you.
Is there any debate? Trustee Reynolds?
Yes, thank you, through the chair. May I ask for a friendly amendment to add the student trustee mentor terms of reference appended to this procedure?
Trustee Rocha?
Yes, actually, that's a great idea. Thank you, Trustee Reynolds.
Could we, could we move that as a motion, please, Trustee Reynolds?
Yes, please. If you could include, just an amendment to include the student trustee mentor terms of reference in this Committees and Appointments Governance Procedure.
Thank you very much. And Trustee Oliver, would you like to second that?
I'll second that.
All right, thank you.
Could I just add in that that would be added as an appendix with the other terms of reference, just for guidance on how that would appear?
Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion on that amendment?
Point of order, just clarify, actually, it's a point of clarification, so it would be, be it resolved that the Committees and Appointments Governance Procedure appended to Report 22134 be adopted with an appendix, with an added appendix? As amended, okay.
All right, so if we can please vote on that amendment.
Agreed, Gray.
Thank you very much, and that passes unanimously. And now back to the main motion. Is there any further discussion before we vote on that? Seeing none, if we can please vote on the adoption of that motion, as amended, please.
In support, Reynolds, I've lost my voting, my voting thing. It's gone somewhere. I can't find it.
Yes, Gray.
Thank you so much, and that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. So now we are up to item 7, or 6.0, Communication to the Board. First of all, we have Items for Action at November 2nd. First of all, we have items for action at November 2nd, 2022.
Point of order, we still haven't completed the action items for this evening. Oh, no, I'm sorry, we have. I'm sorry, I'm out of order.
Thank you. So for action on November the 2nd, we have item 6.1.1, the Audit Committee Policy and Governance Procedure, report number 22129. Trustee Rocha and Collard on behalf of the Governance Standing Committee. Would you like to speak to this at all, trustee Collard?
This has one very small change, and I would like to invite Superintendent Nagoy to speak to it.
And through the Chair, there's only a small change with regards to the minutes becoming available in advance of the following meeting, which is in alignment with the approach for the Board meeting and the Board minutes. They have been also reviewed by legal and confirmed that there are no changes as it pertains to regulation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for either the trustees or Superintendent Nagoy? Seeing none, this will come back to us on November the 2nd. Thank you very much for the information. We are now up to item 6.1.2, Filling a Trustee Vacancy Governance Procedure, report number 22133. Trustee Rocha and trustee Collard on behalf of the Governance Standing Committee. Trustee Collard, would you like to speak to this at all?
Yes, actually, this one, because it's going for legal review, should be for this evening. That's why I got confused about us being finished with the action items. This item should be for tonight because we're asking for it to be going to legal review. We're not approving it tonight. We're asking for legal review, so there's no reason to wait an extra week.
So then are you asking to waive the rules for it to come?
No, I'm asking for it to be put in the right spot on the agenda. It's an action item for this evening, not for two weeks, not for, like, we don't, this doesn't have to appear twice. There's no rule to waive or suspend. An item doesn't have to appear on the agenda twice if it's just going for legal review.
Okay, so then we need to amend the agenda to move it to an action item for this evening. So can I have a motion, trustee Oliver, to move this for action tonight? And trustee Collard, you'll second that motion? Shall move it, you move it, trustee Oliver will second it. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, we'll just wait to get this organized and... Okay, we are there. Okay, there we go. Thank you very much, and that passes unanimously. So trustee Collard, would you like to speak to this at all? Or we just?
Just briefly, this was initially presented at Committee of the Whole two weeks ago and was posted for comments by trustees. Some comments were received and some changes were made to ensure it was aligned with trustees' wishes. And so now it's going to legal for review. And upon return from legal review, any changes recommended by legal will be incorporated, and then it will come back to Board.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions? Wonderful. So if everybody can please cast their vote on sending this to legal. Thank you very much. Thank you so much, and that carries unanimously. Okay, we are now up to item 6.2.1, Health Hazard Communications, report number 22118. Superintendent Gaddett, would you like to speak to this this evening?
Yes, I would. Thank you, and good evening through the Chair to trustees. This report is brought for information in response to the request that you had for the Director of Education. I'd like to thank the Health and Safety Department and the Communications Department that worked with me to update our asbestos administrative procedure that's attached to this report that highlights the changes regarding communications. I'll say a more proactive approach to communicating with our school communities. I think we had a misstep in waiting for test results to come back, and certainly we learned from that, that we should, once we become aware, notify our school community as promptly as possible. And so that's what this is in response to. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. We have a couple of speakers. Trustee Oliver?
Thank you. Through you, Chair, to Director. I am very pleased to see this report. I certainly support the actions that are outlined in the changes to the AP. And I'm just wondering if there are other health hazards that would warrant a similar action? And I don't know if that would be limited to those for which there, an AP already exists, or if there is a list of other kind of health hazard concerns in facilities? And I'm thinking specifically about mold exposure, but there may be others. Thank you.
Yes, thanks for that question through the Chair to trustees. I do think there's an opportunity for us to explore that further, to see certainly our inspection protocol for portables would highlight mold as a potential opportunity to make sure that we're communicating in the same fashion, proactively and as quickly as possible. I will say that there's a whole series of activities that are still taking place in addressing this issue, and one is regular meetings between Facility Services and the Health and Safety Department. And so certainly I can add that to our agenda so that we can strategically and systematically look at other potential contaminants that we should be looking at.
Thank you. Vice Chair Harrison?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. Thanks very much for putting this together and the proactive approach to communicating with members of the community. Water-related issues might be another one on the list. But that's not why I originally came on here. It was whether there are any existing kind of protocols or flow charts that would let people know that you wouldn't have to develop in the moment, that would let people know that, okay, let's say mold's been identified, these are our steps that we take in terms of identification, mitigation, et cetera. So back to this point in terms of asbestos. Asbestos is identified, community notified. At the same time, mitigation measures are taking place. Then XYZ authority comes in to ensure that the mitigation has been done according to procedure, regulation, whatever it may be, like some kind of boilerplate thing that could let people know this is what we do. These are the rules that we follow to a successful outcome for mitigating whatever the contaminants may be.
Thanks for that question. I'll suggest I probably started there in working with the Health and Safety Department and our communications teams to try and understand what the flow typically is. And I think I learned from the others that, you know, as much as we can put into place, there isn't a typical flow. Each site is unique, each instance is unique. But I like that thinking, and I'm not opposed to taking that back and exploring it further. But I do think that each of these issues that we've experienced are unique and require eyes on and hands on, minds on solution and problem solving. So it's not just a standard. But having said that, I do think operationally, there are some standard procedures that we do follow. And so let me, I'd be pleased to take that back and again, work with our Health and Safety Team through our meetings to identify a process for regular operations. And then should something go sideways, how we would quickly intervene to make sure that our communities are made aware.
Thank you. I just have a quick follow-up, which is what you said about each case is unique and requires eyes and ears for that specific situation. I even think as part of a protocol, that is a great piece to let people know that we don't just, you know, blindly do A, B, C, and then, you know, we've checked the boxes, like I see a lot in environmental assessment process. You know, checkbox, A, B, C, you're done. But what you're saying is, no, we recognize the unique context of each scenario and adapt to that. So I think that's even great information.
Thank you, trustee Oliver.
Thank you. Through you to the Director. I did want to add one more point, and I'm sorry, maybe it's in the AP and I missed it. But I wanted to suggest the inclusion of an opportunity for a health expert to be called in to, you know, if you're holding a public meeting for the school community, for example, that could speak to the actual risk of the hazard and help hopefully to alleviate some of the anxiety or provide direction on, you know, what to do next.
Thank you for that question. We did reach out in this instance to Public Health and sought their advice and their input. And unfortunately, I'll say, an in-person show of support was not available from the Public Health Department, but certainly they did offer up some written materials that we did share with the community. So they were a support, and we did reach out. And I would suggest that, yeah, we'll continue to do that where health concerns are raised, that we would look to the expertise in the community and to work with our partners.
Thank you so much. All right, thank you very much, Superintendent Gaddett. Okay, we are now up to item 6.3, Notices of Motion. Are there any notices of motion for this evening? Seeing none, we're now up to the Director's Report.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Shaworth. And good evening, everyone. This evening, my Director's Report is to, first of all, I want to congratulate all returning trustees on a successful campaign. And we certainly look forward to working with all the newly elected trustees as well, who will form the new Board. So we, as a senior team, are delighted to continue our great, excuse me, work and relationship and look forward to working with everyone as we move forward. I also want to just continue to hold in focus for our trustees and for our public that the Schools of the Halton District School Board continue to be in great shape. We have refocused on school improvement planning and creating conditions for learning and achievement, engagement and belonging after three school years of disruption through COVID. And we are once again focusing on, particularly on learning and achievement and outcomes for students. And so all our schools and our school leaders are engaged in this process of school improvement. And so I wanted everyone to know that our schools are working diligently and working hard on this. Some great news to share with you. Each year, the Canadian Association of Communications in Education announces their Bravo Awards for outstanding communication work across the national education sector. This Canada-wide award program recognizes excellence in school board communication and honors exemplary work in all aspects of school public relations, communications, marketing, and engagement. This year, we are thrilled to announce that the HDSB Communications Team and Information Center won three Bravo Awards for their work in promotion of engagement, the HDSB multi-year plan, and the mental health and wellbeing resources. So please join me in congratulating our team, Scott, and everyone else involved, Heather, and the entire team for a job well done, and to the entire HDSB team for great work. Some sad news to report. We have in memoriam Sandra Hall, who's passed away. Sandra first joined the HDSB as a core French teacher at WI Dick in 1997, and has taught at various schools in our Board, Maplehurst, Alton Village, CH Norton, West Oak, before becoming an itinerant and then an instructional program leader in Special Education Services at New Street. In her role as Special Education Services, Sandra supported students with special education needs with heart, passion, and compassion. She was instrumental in leading the work of our gifted programs, as well as LD and reading programs. As a colleague, she was an exceptional mentor to many new instructional leaders. Sandra exuded optimism and kindness in all her interactions. Her friendship and professionalism will be deeply missed by her team and the schools she supported. We also want to inform everyone that Niraj Bakran, a grade-three student at Pineview Public School in Halton Hills, passed away last weekend. Niraj also attended George Kennedy Public School. He'll be remembered by friends, classmates, and staff as a friendly, happy, and kind student who had an infectious smile and thoroughly enjoyed playing with students across the school. Niraj loved sharing about Paw Patrol and enjoyed ATV riding, joy, and riding his bike. He will be deeply missed by all who knew and loved him. If you would be kind enough to join me in a moment of silence for both Sandra and Niraj. Thank you. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you so much, Director Ennis. We're now up to item 6.5, Communication from the Chair. There is one letter that we have written to the Minister of Education regarding the Education Act, Section 264, Section 1, that is attached to the agenda. We are now up to item 6.6, Committee Reports. Are there any committee reports to be discussed this evening? Trustee Rocha?
Not so much a report, but an update. The Environmental Management Team, known as EMT, has recently changed its name. It now goes by Environmental- It now goes by Environmental Leadership and Sustainability Committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything else to report? Seeing none, we are up to item 6.7, trustees, questions and comments. Do any trustees have any questions or comments this evening? Trustee Garretts.
Very briefly, I had the opportunity today to tour the new Rattlesnake Point Public School. And I just want to give huge kudos to the admin team and staff and all the students at the school because it's still very much under construction. It's safe, but it's very much under construction and everybody's being super flexible. And the gym was, lines were painted on the week, this past weekend. So they're now actually able to use the gym and things are coming along. But kudos to all of them because it's not been easy. But, you know, flexibility is the name of the game, so.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Vice Chair Harrison.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. I have a couple, or maybe a few things. The first one is I've been receiving numerous letters from people in support or with ideas and different supports related to the labor negotiations that are ongoing at this point in time. And I just wonder, my understanding is that we're still using the two-tiered system that was put in place a couple of times ago whereby, you know, the bigger items are negotiated centrally, so not at the HDSB. And then once those big central items are resolved, then things switch over to the local level. And I just wonder if there's any resource that somebody could point to where people can get information about that process because it is a bit unique from what I have seen in other negotiation processes.
I would ask Superintendent Taha to respond to that question.
Thanks, Director Ennis. Through you, Chair Shawleworth, to Vice Chair Harrison. Certainly, there's a lot of news in the media about a pending labor disruption that may occur. As you know, the QP Employee Group could be, or is, in a legal strike position as of November 3rd, which is next week. We don't have any pending information that, you know, a strike is imminent. However, that's something that's certainly possible from a legal standpoint. So to your question with respect to information on, you know, the context in which collective bargaining occurs, the two-tiered structure that you pointed out, and that there's issues, our bargains centrally and locally. We will be certainly in communication with our community, our parents, our students, our staff, our union partners with respect to our response to any disruption. And in doing so, we will be providing updates to these stakeholders through a couple of forums, our website, our board website, and there's a dedicated labor update page that will be up and running. And in those updates, we will contextualize those processes and what's happening. Again, we're hopeful that we do not experience any disruption. But nonetheless, if we do, we will certainly be providing that information to all stakeholders.
Thank you very much. I think that'll be appreciated. The second question is, last week, the Minister of Education made an announcement regarding catch-up for student learning, the Minister of Education, that is. And I wonder whether there were any systemic funds that were announced for that, for which HDSB would be a beneficiary and what those funds would be allocated towards. Thank you.
Thank you. Through you, Chair. I'm going to ask Superintendent Nagoy to respond.
Thank you. And for the Chair, the Ministry memo did identify the opportunity to roll forward any unspent funds of the tutoring supports that have been provided in April for the prior year. And given the short timeframe to be able to put in programs in place to spend that money, school boards across the province had a significant amount of funds remaining for our board. That's approximately 1.6 million. So it's good news to know that we are able to use those funds in this current year, up until March 31st, to continue to support the student learning and recovery. And there's additional funding to be announced by board levels. So we are not sure what our proportionate share will be. But there's 15 million provincially to be added towards the math strategy and in particular, working on a digital tool to assist with catching up on math curriculum strategies. So we're still awaiting information on that.
Thank you. So it sounds like a good chunk of it was money that was already provided. We're just able to use it for a longer timeframe and then that there is some new funding as well. So that's great. Thank you very much. And my third question is whether we've heard anything yet regarding the ability to continue to have meetings virtually and/or hybrid. I know that during the pandemic, it was a necessity that we have meetings virtually. And it is a great option if, to have these hybrid meetings. If people are unwell or traveling, then we can still be a part of the meeting and fulfill our duties that way, just not at the table. And I know that during the pandemic, we also satisfied the public access requirements in a number of ways. Firstly, through the live streaming. And secondly, through that, the posting of questions on the board website. There's a link to do that and we go through as many as we can that are related to governance at each meeting. So I know that virtual peace is set to expire on November 15th. I just wonder if there's any word from the Minister as to whether that will continue. I think we'll be able to have hybrid meetings still. Has anybody heard anything in that regard?
Through the Chair, we still have not received any word from the ministries yet. So we're still waiting to hear, and I know the provinces as well. So as soon as we hear anything, we will share.
I can also ask at our next meeting with the Minister, he did mention it at the last meeting and didn't seem to be entertaining that idea, was the impression that I got. But no substantive answers were given.
Thank you. And just a follow-up comment. It seems to me in terms of accessibility, that the hybrid model still allows public accessibility, both live streaming and through the submission of the questions and/or to attend in public, so, or in person. So I think that would be a great option. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Trustee Amos.
Thank you. I recently was reading an article that had referred to a report released by the Financial Accountability Office that said that basically, over the next 10 years, the Ministry of Education is looking at decreasing the funding for the education system with, for about $12.3 billion. And that even this year, there was, they didn't spend as much as they had originally budgeted in the year. This really concerns me as one of the lowest funded boards in the province, the fact that they're starting to potentially claw back some of the funding and with increasing costs and all those other pieces. I really think that in the next term, I'm going to ask for support to re-energize the Fix the Formula campaign and see if we can maybe do from advocating for our board. Because I really think if that is true and they are looking at decreasing the funding, that we ask, we need to get them to revisit the funding formula and see if they can make it more fair for all students, especially our students. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Trustee Amos. Are there any further questions or comments from trustees? Seeing none, we're now up to item 6.8, which is public questions. So during the pandemic, we made a commitment to ensure that the HDSB website, there was a link at the bottom of tonight's agenda to allow members of the public to ask questions of the board. Questions received may be answered during this meeting, particularly those related to agenda items, or they may be delayed to the following meeting at the discretion of the Chair. Multiple questions that are received that are similar in nature may be grouped together and a notation will be made that multiple people ask the same question. Questions will not be attributed and any question that contains language that is hateful or discriminatory will not be considered. Vice Chair Harrison, are there any questions from the public this evening?
Madam Chair, there are no questions from the last two weeks. And I believe that the people who have asked questions specific to a certain topic, i.e. their school or some specific scenario, have been responded to directly. As they're not matters of governance. So no, there haven't been any. And I believe that the ones from before two weeks have been responded to in that manner.
Great. Thank you so much. And again, that brings to the point that there are many ways that you can have your questions answered by the board. So there of course is the question and answer portion of the meeting. You can also choose to delegate the board on matters of governance. But optimally, the best way to have your question answered is to reach out directly to your local trustees. Trustee, contact details are available on the hdsb.ca website. So we will now have to rise back into public, or private session. Trustee Daniele, would you like to make a motion to move back into private session?
Yes, I would. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And Trustee Gray, would you second that motion?
Yes, I would. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any objections to moving back into private session? Seeing none, that passes by unanimous consent. Thank you so much to our gallery for engaging in our meeting this evening. So I think we'll take five minutes, have a little bit of a stretch.
Thank you.
Great. All right, thank you everyone for coming back. Seeing that our agenda is exhausted, I will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much everybody.
Thank you.